Mr. Flack, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Be on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
And we have the mayor on the phone.
Yes.
Sound, okay.
I always wondered what they were doing.
Good morning, everybody. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Here.
Here.
Councilman Slakda?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, first order of business is, Mayor Simmons is away on some family business, particularly with respect to a death that happened in the family on a memorial service. So I'd like to make a motion that Peter could participate in the meeting while he's not physically present in the meeting.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Public comment? And I guess the notion is use that mic over there.
We formed the city on a government light, and the essence of that, in my opinion, is the savings of outsourcing most of the projects and having fewer government employees with the pension and health insurance and life insurance expense when the projects are done and there's still fewer employees. And we've had a 20 percent increase in the number of employees in the last five or six years. I think we'd better go back to government light and give everybody a break. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Jim Worcester.
Any more?
No.
Comments that I may make?
Speaking to the microphone.
Passing around some written comments that I may make, just for the record. My name is Jim Worcester. I'm a full-time resident of Benita Springs. My background of working as a consulting engineer is infrastructure generally in transportation specific. I was appointed earlier this year to be one of Benita Springs, representing to the Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO Citizens Advisory Committee, CAC, which meets monthly. I've had heavy-duty experience in my early years working with MPOs in the state of Indiana. Let me quickly explain what an MPO is and their function relative to our city of Benita Springs. In all the United States, major geographical areas typically over 200,000 population, an MPO is designated. There are hundreds of MPOs throughout the United States. Ours encompasses all of Lee County. Their job is to distribute the 99 percent of all dollars earmarked by both the federal as well as state government. The bulk of the dollars are federal gas tax and state gas taxes, along with stimulus monies, sometimes going through the MPO. All in all, billions of dollars nationwide yearly pass through this. This has been the distribution process for many, many years. With this background and based on my observation at the CAC meeting since the first of the year, it is blatantly obvious to me that the city of Benita Springs is not getting their fair share of available dollars. In the past, the city has received only minimal funds from Lee County MPO, and in the near future will receive only minimal dollars. In my opinion, the reason is simple. We are not like Lee County. We are not applying needed staff resources to pursue available funds. Let me point out some current numbers based on the MPO's current Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, for years 2018 through '22. The five-year total is $888 million for all funds currently under their jurisdiction. Following are the Benita Springs projects currently funded with MPO dollars in this five-year TIP. There are general dollars for routine maintenance of highway lighting and traffic signal maintenance. There's $1.13 million for I-75 Benita Beach Road interchange landscape. Recognizing that FDOT and our MPO are making monies available, some discretionary funds for some of the Benita Beach Road Tamiami Trail intersection reworking quadrant plan, there is nothing shown in this five-year TIP for this Tamiami Trail Benita Beach Road problem intersection. However, there is a bit over $2 million for lane improvements to Old 41 from Benita Beach Road south to the Collier County line. I suggest the city might want to request the MPO to ship these dollars to assist the funding of the current quadrant plan that will start to alleviate this intersection's congestion problems. Finally, the MPO in the five-year plan has $780,000 earmarked in 2018 and 2019 for bike pedestrian paths near Benita Elementary School. These projects total $4.5 million, which is our share of the $888.8 million that pass through our MPO. Or only .5 percent. That's not 5 percent. That's only one-half of 1 percent. Just as a note, in 2014, the population of all of Lee County was 679,513. Benita Springs, 49,299. We are 2.2 percent, 2.7, excuse me, 7.26 percent of the Lee County's total population. I must admit that we have missed, I may have missed, a small project or another distribution to Benita Springs. However, it is obvious we are not getting even close to our fair share of the $888 million moving through the MPO. With this unfortunately kind of long background, as a part of your current budgeting process, I strongly recommend you designate as an essential function of a city employee full-time to find funding sources with the Lee County MPO, Lee County itself, FDOT district, and all other possible future stimulus dollars to help fund transportation connectivity for the city. Just as a simple example, there are MPO dollars specifically designated in the federal funding program to remove billboards. It's been there for years. We're all aware of the billboard at the city's gateway at the southwest corner of Imperial Parkway and Benita Beach Road. That has a billboard at the cemetery entrance. Wouldn't it be wonderful to obtain funds to buy this sign? Do not wait another day deliberating the obvious need to get the right person working the appropriate funding sources to get in line for future dollars. Thanks for listening. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Thank you, Jim.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. My condolences for your loss. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Council, staff. Good morning. I'm Dallas Revoort. I am the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board. I'm very proud of what this board has done in the last 12 months. I have three board members here with me today, Ellie, Alex, and Trish. I'd like to thank you, Council Gibson, for making sure that the water tower was not destroyed. I know Alan had a process in that, too, so thank you very much. We've changed the ordinance to include a demo delay. We have five oral history projects that will be completed before the end of September. We're hoping to have a historic traveling exhibition, which is going to include 20 to 30 poster-sized prints on metal that we will be able to take around the city for fundraisers or just general information and history. We also will be placing five historic plaques on designated resources. We've had two residents recently come forward and ask to be designated. We hope to have the Dixie Moon relocated this year. We've established a fundraising committee, a subcommittee for grants. And with that being said, I would like to bring up Ellie McEwen to speak about our historic art village. Jay is in Europe. He presented it last time, and Ellie and him are working together with Trish as our subcommittee. So.
Good morning. As Dallas said, I'm Ellie McEwen. I'm a member of your Historic Preservation Board. And what I would like to talk about this morning is the historic village. And when you listened to Jay in early June, he talked about the end product. He talked about what the structures would look like. He talked about the village being formed and open for the public. What I'd like to talk to you about this morning is the beginning phases of that. How do we get there? How do we get a historic village in our community? The first step is to give you information so that you can make an informed decision. That would look like in the form of a feasibility study. Right now, the committee has started writing an RFP, and I have a sample so that you can sort of get an idea of what the things that we're looking at. In the feasibility study, all that is is data collection. The first phase would determine how and where to get the structures, where they would come from, where the village should be located, and how repayment would be provided. We've researched grants, and we've talked to a number of different funders, potential funders. What they've told us is they have plenty of money for acquisition, for rehabilitation, and for relocation of the structures when we locate them. What they don't have is feasibility study funds. They say that if the study, once the study is done, if it doesn't show a positive outcome and the community doesn't want to move forward with the project, then they have nothing to show for the money that the funder has spent. So where does that leave us? What we would like to do is ask for additional funds in this budget year to start the feasibility study. What you have in front of you, as I said, there's a big, huge draft on it, and that is for a reason. What we would like to do is flush out during our committee, our board meetings and talk about and get you the best product we could. We anticipate hiring through the city's process, a consultant to look at the feasibility of the village. We don't necessarily have a location in mind. That is sort of steps four, five, or six down the road. But first, we want to be able to provide you with the information to make sure that the study, the village, is feasible. And so we're asking, in addition to the funds for rehabilitation for the single-family homes, we're asking for additional money for this upcoming fiscal year. And one of the things that I'd like to point out is, in previous years, as well as this '16-'17 funds, we will be returning money to you. In previous years, we've not been able to spend at least $15,000 to $20,000 each year. In '16-'17, we'll be refunding about $17,000. And so the way we kind of look at that is, it would offset any additional funds that we're asking for. So we are here for, oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. The $40,000 that you've already allocated that's in the budget this year for rehabilitation, what we would also like to ask is to have some flexibility so that when we get toward the end of the fiscal year, if some of the money is unspent, that we would be able to spend it perhaps in the feasibility study or other items other than just rehabilitation. So Dallas and I, as well as Alex and Trish, are here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ellie. So again, what we would like to request is the same amount as last year. It was $50,000. We had spent some of that, it kind of rolled over from the previous year. I would like to ask for $50,000. That was for the grant funding. If you, what we would like to do is maybe make that flexible so it's not just for grant funding, that we could use some of it for the historic art village. There's also $10,000 allotted for the historic preservation project. Again, I would ask for that to be the same amount this year. We would like to continue with the historic photos. There are costs that we have to pay out of that for numerous things, like the plaques, the historic plaques. Those are about $300 apiece. We're hoping that more people will come forward to be designated. The grant program has been an excellent way to bring people forward to get their properties designated as historic. I don't know how many of you were at the Fourth of July celebration. There was a huge turnout there. We expect with the downtown redevelopment that this will continue and with attractions like the Wonder Gardens and a historic village and the Historical Society's home, that we will bring people downtown and have something for them to view. So again, I thank you for all of your work, especially the city staff that helps us on a monthly basis, Arlene and Alex, and actually Mike Fegan, who's been really detrimental in the last year. I know he's not a city staff. He works for John, but he is an excellent addition to our group, and we appreciate that. And what he said when he came back from his historic, I think he went on a
Conference?
A conference, that he was so glad to see that the historic preservation, our board, worked well with the city and the council to get things done because it wasn't like that in other places in the country. That was really great for us to hear him say that and how our work is being recognized. So again, I want to thank you. Please, if you haven't seen Robert Gibbs' retail market study video presentation, watch that again. That kind of, that's kind of what you're looking at downtown. We want that historic village, that historic charm that we have here. And I feel like the historic resources that we have will help that. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, let me know.
Anyone else from the public? Morning, Nigel.
Council, good morning. I don't have notes with me, and I don't have my begging clothes on, so this is a good sign, relax. First of all, on behalf of our entire board, thank you for your support throughout the year. It's been appreciated, and everyone's extremely excited about the upcoming mural project. I'm already getting calls, so that's a good thing. If you haven't seen it, we did get the entire Slices from Heaven sculpture that was in the park that has been replaced, not repaired. The artist came in and agreed that it was not up to par. We didn't have to sue him. He replaced it last week, and that's a good thing. What we're looking for this year is your support again. Not going to ask for a huge increase because we don't think it's appropriate. We do have some projects that are possible, and we'd like Council to consider moving the budget from 45 to 50, only because if those projects do come into play, then we don't want to have to come back to you. And I would ask new council members, if you would remember over the years past, if we didn't have an opportunity to spend the money wisely, we haven't spent it. So if you would consider that, we would be deeply appreciative, and we will use it wisely. We're excited about working with Council on the city entrance projects. We know that's going to be long-term. Mr. O'Flynn has really spent a lot of his time, and we appreciate that as well. He's been a very active liaison, and that helps us greatly knowing what your thoughts are. That being said, any questions?
Thank you, Nigel.
That's a good thing as well. Also, you all know this, and we hear her name again and again. We couldn't get our work done without Arlene and new member of the staff, Nadine, who one of these days we'll get to, but she's been instrumental in making sure that our meetings run smoothly and we get everything we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for what you do, man. Anyone else? I just had a question, Carl, on what Dallas, the numbers that he was talking about, do we have a clear line of sight on what those numbers are that he's requesting?
It sounds like he's asking for a move up from $45,000 to $50,000 in their budget. Is that correct?
No, it was, it was $50,000 last year
Okay.
For the grant program.
Right.
So I would like
Microphone, please. Sorry, Dallas.
So what we're asking for is that $50,000 for the grant program.
Yeah.
I'm also asking for the $10,000 for the historic projects. And then the historic village project, we would like $50,000 to start that.
Right.
That was the reference to the RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
And in that, you're also asking, you didn't spend approximately $17,000, to use that as carryforward to offset the $50,000?
We realize that we can't carry forward from year to year, but absolutely, we'd like that to be considered.
Got it.
When you make your decision, consider that we didn't spend that this year on the grant, so. And if it comes down to it, and we don't get the $50,000 for the village, please maybe change that where we can use some of the $50,000 that we have in the grant to use at our discretion for either grant funding or some of the historic village feasibility study.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm not sure if this is the right time to jump in, but I apologize. Good morning. I hope everybody's doing well. Being the liaison to this committee and seeing the fine work that they do, I wholeheartedly support this, and quite frankly, I, anything else they want, not carte blanche, I don't mean to say that, but when we look at what we're doing, 41 and other places around town, and what we're looking, and you know, we're still in the works for negotiation with the Wonder Gardens, looking to preserve, you know, enrich, keep our enrichment of our community and blend our historical past with the future down there, the things that this committee does are simply invaluable, and Dallas and the team do a phenomenal job. And I just, I just can't say enough about the good things that they do, so I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate your support.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone have questions, any other questions for Mr. Worcester, Dallas Revoort, or Nigel Fulick? Fred?
Jim?
Yeah?
You want to get up to the
Same to yourself.
The
It's the mayor.
MPO, I think.
Not mine.
It's your phone.
Oh, it's on.
It's on.
The MPO, I believe, didn't we just validate or approve the funding capital projects for MPO? Didn't that happen?
Well, there are various lists, so I'm not exactly sure which list
Yeah, well, they updated their five-year plan, so.
Right, right.
I liked your idea. I think it's great. I'd agree even more. I would like to be more aggressive, but the one problem I'm trying to think of is, if we already approved their capital plan for the next five years, which I think just happened, how do we go back and say, oh, we don't want that money going to Old 41 South, which I agree with. We want to put it up at the quadrants. You got any ideas on that?
Yes, sir. And I understand the contempt because you did approve all this.
I'm sad to say we did.
But there's no reason you can't go in and ask for an adjustment of the dollars. Just, it can start anywhere. It can start at the CAC, or the technical committee, or the board itself to ask for those dollars to be adjusted. It's kind of, our dollars are being the city of Benita Springs, and we should have the right to use those dollars for an equally important project.
I think a little bit of, is that $2 million or whatever you came up with?
Yeah.
Does that exclude the Collier County part because they were doing something, too?
That's just the Benita Springs amount, the way I understand the program.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to talk in general about the notion that we may have not been as aggressive as we should be on grants, and that was perfectly clear when we had the presentation by the regional planning agency spokesperson at our last meeting, that there are other communities that are getting grants to, like, for example, do the stuff that we pay our consultants for. So I think there are things that we're missing. I don't know how we're missing it or why we're missing it, but I would be in favor of trying to review the process that we're using here so that we can apply for some of these grants and, again, to have more direct interaction with what I call our supergovernment, where I feel we're not being heard. The concept that was brought up by Jim Worcester, I think, is something we need to address.
Anyone else? So Peter, can you hear all right, Peter? Mr. Mayor, you there, in the sky? Whoops.
I'm sorry. I have it on mute to keep away any background noise, but yes.
Yeah. So should we move ahead with this agenda? Do you have any preliminary comments you'd like to make, or we can go to Carl's presentation of the five-year financial plan?
Yeah, no, I think that's great to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So I assume it's Carl?
Okay. Actually, it's going to be Ann Wright, our finance director, presenting a brief overview of the five-year book.
Okay. Good morning, Council. I would like to begin by expressing our appreciation for the input the Council did give us on the budget process and the budget book presentation, and we did incorporate as much as we could to that process. But I'd also like to send a big thanks to the finance staff, two of whom are in the room with us today, who worked very hard to reformat certain parts of the budget book. And I want to especially acknowledge Christina, who worked with our software consultant and worked with getting some of the formats changed in the reports. So a lot of effort went into that, and it's greatly appreciated, and going forward will be great efficiencies for us. The projections, and you each should have this, was provided at Wednesday's meeting, or I have copies if anyone needs it. But the five-year projections, they begin with using the expected FY 2017 for each fund, and then year one of the projection is our proposed budget for FY '18. And the only difference between what you see in the projections and what you see in the budget book is, we did get our July 1 taxable values, and they were very favorable, reflecting reflecting from a, basically, an additional three percent increase in our values to eight point nine-three percent from what the estimate was in June. So that built into the budget for the general fund increased ad valorem tax revenue by two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, and then in our debt service fund, our 2014 debt service fund, the portion that relates to the downtown, an additional twenty thousand, and for the portion that Lee County is participating in our revenue agreement, an additional twenty-five thousand. So those are the changes in that column that says proposed budget. They're highlighted in yellow. But each fund goes through, and there's assumptions used for each of the funds. The projected unassigned fund balance at the bottom, that basically is what we want to monitor, to make sure going forward that we have healthy fund balances to move forward with the different projects and initiatives that we have. The other big assumption is that we did continue allocating from the various funds funding for our debt service payments. And our 2011 debt is funded eighty-five percent from road impact fees and fifteen percent from the general fund. Our 2014 debt is serviced through the ad valorem tax that gets allocated to that fund, the Lee County participation, and then the difference to meet the debt service payment comes fifty-seven percent from the general fund and forty-three percent from the gas tax fund. Additionally, we have a five-year capital improvement plan that goes, actually extends into ten years, but since this is a five-year plan, we're focusing on that. Any funding that is required to meet that plan is built into the transfers out of the various funds. So we worked to make sure that we were consistent with what was shown in this capital improvement plan for how it was being funded through these financial projections. Going through the process, I was very pleasantly surprised. I thought for sure with our requirements, our funding requirements for the quadrant plan and the Beneadabitch Road Visioning, that we may need to borrow money. And as we worked through the process, and I did actually contact our financial advisor to get some feel for what we might be looking at, what type of interest rate if you're looking in the 2020 to 2021 year, and it was a very unfavorable interest rate. So as we worked through, one of the assumptions that I did make in these projections, and if you can flip back to page six, as you know, there was an increase in the rates for the electricity franchise fee and the communication services tax, and that revenue has been accumulating in the 2011 debt service fund on page six. And this is on the financial projection. The budget, the projection here does assume that accumulated funds from those revenue streams would be used to, as pay-as-you-go funding, for the quadrant plan and the Beneadabitch Road Visioning project. And that keeps us from, in this five-year period, needing to borrow additional funds through the five-year period. I wanted to call that to your attention, and I know we want council's guidance later. It's an agenda item to consider how that is used, but that's how this is prepared so that there was no additional debt being considered in this five years. It does position us to continue with the efforts on the funding partners and move forward with the project at the rate that the staff has recommended from a standpoint of the information from the consultants. So I wanted to definitely call that to your attention. The other thing that's throughout the various funds, and I know it was discussed briefly at Wednesday's meeting, is the slowdown in our revenue streams from development and building within the city. So you'll see that in the road impact fee fund as well as the building fund. It does leave the general fund with a healthy, this five-year projection says the general fund with a healthy projected unassigned fund balance each year in the four to five million dollar range. And any questions on it?
I just, I'd just like to make a comment to emphasize something. These impact fees in the city used to be rocket fuel. Now they're kind of a melting ice cube. And I think we need to think about that and the effects of that. So I actually went back to the budget from 2005 and '06. The impact fees in those two years were nine million, four hundred thousand dollars, and eight million, nine hundred thousand dollars. You know, and if you look back on page fifteen, you'll see in 2013, they were five million three. And now you can see on the five-year projections, last year, they were four million three. This year, they're going down to two million two, projected to be two hundred thousand dollars out in year five. So in my view, what we had here was a growing city with a lot of building, and we had the impact fees that provided a lot of money to do a lot of things. Now, as we mature, we're in the same position as Naples, Delray Beach, Boca, where all you got to do is look at their budgets and see what their impact fees are. They're nowhere near the volume we used to have before. So more to say about that later, but I think it relates in a large way to how we go forward funding what our needs are in the city. And our needs are in the city for funding are far more than a quadrant plan. There may be money here for a quadrant plan, but we have a lot of other initiatives that we've talked about. More about that later, but I just wanted to emphasize, this is a big mega trend that's affecting our city, at least in my vision.
And if I might follow up, Mayor. So I agree. I mean, when you take a look at the numbers from the mid-two thousands, 2005, of course, that was in the heat of an unprecedented growth spurt in Lee County and other places around the country, actually. We're certainly not in that now, but I think if you take a look at where we're at, there's going to be continued pressure for residential development, which is just going to drive up service requests as our population continues to grow. But we're running out of land. And while we can expect some follow-on commercial impact fees, I think Councilmember O'Flynn is exactly right, that, you know, we have a yellow flag here that the numbers probably will never reach 2005 levels again. But you're seeing a trend downward where the money that we've been using to put projects in place that we now have to maintain through the general fund typically, are now beginning to reduce, or we need to be paying attention to those kinds of things. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Ann?
I've got one simple question. On impact fees, is it possible to have, like, on residential impact fees for what you call construction on raw land, which we're running out of, versus a different tier for redevelopment of neighborhoods and existing blighted areas? Is that legally possible? Let me take a run at this one.
Well, if you've got a house there, you've got a house, and you put a new house up there, you don't, can't charge an impact fee.
Well, can we do it?
No.
No. Impacts have already been initiated first time. That's why you see lots of sale. Well, there used to be a house. Impact fees already paid.
Even if we have to widen the road and improve it because of what's going on, increase the density?
We can get a legal opinion, but that's my understanding of the point, too.
Yeah.
One little saving grace is I know Lee County is redoing their impact fees. It has to be done by March of next year. I know they're going to start to study August or September.
Right. And of course, our impact fees for roads and parks are independent of that, and that's why we've stayed at the levels we have in terms of rates compared to what the county did a number of years ago.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Is that it for the five-year?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, if I might?
Please, yeah.
Okay. Let me just run right into my presentation. This is going to be very brief, but it's very high level. Our revenues, if you take our revenue sources citywide, your number one, obviously, is ad valorem at twenty-nine percent. Your number two is the sales tax at about fifteen percent. Number three is our franchise fees. There's the rest of them fall in behind that. Our expenditures by fund type, you can see that the general fund is obviously very high, and for the most part, so are our capital projects, and that's in line with what you'd normally expect in terms of fund types. Okay, now our cost categories. So you've got personal service, operating expenditures, debt service, and capital projects. Now, I know people are saying that, you know, maybe we're not government light. I will tell you that when you've got personal services, and you can see it graphically here, when you've got that low of a percentage of personal services, and you see the high bar with regards to operating expenses, which includes some contractual services, as do the capital projects, that's very different than what you'd see in a full-service city. I will tell you that there are times in a full-service city where your personal expenses are running seventy percent of your general fund budget. So this is just a comparison of where we're at right now. Obviously, for the projected seventeen, eighteen year, we're down to twenty-six point one million versus the numbers that you see to the left of that. And then fund balance by fund type, you can see here that the general fund's running around, as Ann's already said, four to five million, and then your special revenue funds balances are running much higher than that. That also includes our building fund, which of course has about five million in fund balance in it. I will tell you, and there's some concern about not being able to touch that, I will tell you, we're making a concerted effort to try to get a portion, appropriate portion of the neighborhood services budget reimbursed by the building fund because of their efforts to enforce our building codes, along with our inspectors.
Could you stop there for a second? Because that's very good news.
Yes, sir.
How much money are we talking about?
Well, I'm still looking for a number.
It's under study. We're doing time studies and then recalculating that.
Because as we've talked, it's very, we've got to be very careful that we use that money appropriately, and we feel that there are multiple times a day that we've got neighborhood services, code enforcement, inspectors doing work on building-related issues. So we're looking to basically reimburse the general fund for an appropriate amount of money each year from the building fund for those activities. Okay? And we'll let you know that number as soon as we get to it. Okay. Property tax values, citywide, obviously, 2008 was the high year for taxable property values. Then we dipped during the recession, and then we are now back up to close to '07 and '09 levels. We have reached, we've reached ten billion dollars, that's with a B, in taxable property values citywide at this point. And then we have the downtown redevelopment area. So this is interesting because this is important for tax increment financing in our revenue-sharing agreement with the county. And based upon what we've seen here, there's been a two-hundred-and-twelve million dollar increase in the capture area for downtown between the base year of 2012, 2013, and what is projected for '18. And that's a huge growth. We, obviously, the city council at the time was very thoughtful about picking the boundaries of the capture area, which includes the dog track, as well as some residential development up north, Bonita Isles. And all of that growth is being used to help pay off the debt that we've got for the downtown redevelopment area. But that growth is excellent, and we've heard from two different developers down there that have approved projects, that they are finally ready to get moving, hopefully this summer or this fall.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. So a hundred million of ratable increase equals how much to us in taxes? It's point eight, so what is that? What's the math?
The increase between the two years?
No, if the value goes up, let's say the value goes up a hundred million, how much do we get at point eight, which is our middle rate, basically?
It's about eighty, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, all right. So that two-hundred-and-twelve is a hundred sixty thousand, ballpark. How does that compare to the area outside of the downtown redevelopment? Is it growing faster?
Yes.
Okay.
It is growing faster.
It increased eleven percent of value versus our overall rate for the total city was eight point nine-three percent.
So that's an increase in ad valorem in that area of, let's say, a hundred sixty thousand dollars, and that's showing up in the debt service fund?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, also, when you take a look at this growth, the county's commitment to this project continues to grow, too, as well as, you know, as the taxable assessed value continues to grow. And we project that this year, the county will be writing us a check for seven hundred?
Seven hundred.
Over seven hundred thousand dollars towards that debt payment on the downtown. Okay, so this is just a history of the city millage compared to the rollback rate. And as you can see, we've gone up and down, but the bottom line is we've held pretty steady relative to the millage rate and the rollback for the last few years. I will indicate, however, that when you see this area right here, that means that's revenue that the city chose not to take, because the rollback, in those years during the recession, the rollback rate was actually, you could have gone up higher on your millage just to collect the same amount of money because of the reduction in the assessed values. So when you take a look at this, these areas right here, that green hash mark is actually showing, even though you don't increase the millage rate because of the assessed value increases, you are looking at a tax rate or a tax increase from holding the rate steady. Okay, and then the allocation of total tax bill, you can see education is significant at about forty-six percent between state and local. You've got your fire district at fifteen percent, Lee County at thirty. City of Bonita Springs is holding steady at five percent. And that's it for my just general comments about the budget. And I'm going to turn it, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, we'll turn it back over to Ann for the next item.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
I do have a PowerPoint that was distributed to you. We're going to start with a page that looks like this, and Councilman Dewitt requested this page, and I know that Councilwoman Carumba has mentioned to you in the past about understanding the various restrictions. But it goes through our various revenue sources and identifies what restrictions are associated with those revenue streams and how we can spend them. So basically, the least restrictive, or I'll use the word unrestricted, but we're required to comply with law as to how we spend the money, are in the top box, the property taxes, the half-cent, sales tax, state shared revenue, franchise fees, communication services tax. And those are revenues that we see in the general fund. So they're used for general operating costs of the city. The gas tax and state shared fuel tax revenue related to transportation only, operating maintenance and capital projects, the various components of those gas tax have different requirements. Road impact fees for transportation only for road capital projects, which enhance the existing network to accommodate new growth. And park impact fees, whether regional and the community, for land acquisition, site improvement, buildings, and the equipment associated with the new or expanded park, and also bikeways, and there are some restrictions associated with those. And then the building permit fees, by which we just mentioned, used for costs related to complying with the state building code. So those are the various restrictions. I do have much more detail, if anyone's interested in that, on specifics as to how they're spent. Wanted to do just a real high-level-
Let me ask you.
Pardon? Sure.
At some point, I'd like to talk about this concept as it applies to current revenues and expenses and operating expenses, but I want to stop Ann's flow, so why don't we just?
Okay.
Okay.
But I think this, my view is, is extremely important topic. But I think this, my view is this extremely important topic.
Wanted to do a real high level on the general fund since that is our main operating fund of the city. And I pulled this information straight from the page in the budget book, the Budget at a Glance, which is on page 19. And it does the high level, this is what we're starting with as spendable. And I want to focus on using that word spendable fund balance because our fund balance is much larger than that, but we have our operating and our disaster reserves. And then we have commitments in fund balance from capital projects that have not yet been completed. They were budgeted for, they weren't completed, and by our city charter, those dollars carry over. So when we drill down, 4.9 million is what is projected as being the spendable fund balance, so available for future uses, budgeting purposes. Then we have the revenue budget that's, that's in the budget book, less the expenditures, transfers out to other funds, leaving a net increase in spendable fund balance through the FY 2018 year to end the year at 5.2 million dollars, almost 5.3 million dollars spendable. Our general fund revenues.
So can you just stop there and go back for a second?
Sure.
So I actually have some different numbers we're going to talk about later, which combine the debt service requirements together with the general fund requirements. But nevertheless, even on this basis, you'll see the only thing we're kicking out for savings out of the general fund on this analysis is 258,000. In other words, after operations, general fund revenues, the way she's doing it, general fund, I would do it combining the debt service because there's ad valorem in the debt service fund too, but talk about that later. But this does, in my view, rough justice to it. We're kicking out only 250,000 out of the general fund. And I'll give you kind of an order of magnitude example. In Astero, they're kicking out four and a half million dollars a year in the general fund, putting them toward capital projects, so.
And the transfers out to other funds, some include some capital projects.
Yeah, understood. And that's why I would combine the debt with this, but go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next slide just shows a highlight on our general fund revenues and clearly our ad valorem taxes are our main source of funding for this fund, followed by the half-cent sales tax and then franchise fees. And compared to the FY 2017 revenue budget, this represents $137,000 increase and compared to our expected revenue, 277,000. General fund expenditures, as Carl pointed out, are personal services. The total for the FY 2018 budget is 37% of the total of the operating expenditures, whereas that's a lot lower than a full-service city. Typically, you see that category a higher percentage. Operating expenditures, 61% and capital outlay, 2%. And then the comparisons to the FY 2017, original operating expenditures budget, this is a $949,000 increase and an increase over our expected 2017 operating expenditures of 893,000. At your table, you did receive a sheet like this. In the stack, it was, followed the PowerPoint presentation. And this information comes from the schedule in the back of the book, starting on page 73, that breaks out the total costs of the funds by their cost category. So this is taking all of the dollars out of each individual department and breaking them down or summarizing them by cost category for just the general fund. And I wanted to mention that because I wanted to go over some of the spikes in the FY 2018 budget and explain those real quickly. But looking at the summary, there are those highlighted numbers and those are the ones I want to focus on, but I want to make a couple of observations on the other numbers. The wage is the first line item, which combines three categories of wages. And there is a variance from the current year budget of 62,000, and that is tied to the increases that staff did receive during FY 2017 that were adjusted halfway through the year. And so the current year, FY 18, will reflect a full year of those increases, as well as the increases to the executive staff that were approved for this year. Also, following down, there is a line item, cost category or object code, 45 insurance. And there are some increases because we are experiencing some increase in our general liability insurance. The others are the highlighted ones that on the PowerPoint, I do have some explanations for them. The health and life insurance, and we group health and life insurance together in one account, that's why it's called that, but it's predominantly, the driver on the increase is the health insurance. And the retirement. The retirement, just briefly, when we are doing the budget, we don't have solid information as to what the rates will be for FY 2018. The rates change effective July 1. We did not have that information when we were working on the budget. And then, so for nine months of the year, we didn't know the rate, the first nine months of our fiscal year. And then July 1, 2018, the rates will change again. So for those back three months, we don't have that rate either. So we worked with the rate that we did know, which was the rate that went into effect July 1, 2016. We applied an increase of 10% to that rate, multiplied that by our wages for nine months, and then for the last three months, we added another 10% to that calculated rate. And the reason why we did that is because the, we have experienced some increases in the FRS rate and somewhat tied, I believe, to the accounting for the liability that exists and when you do that, when they do their actuarial valuation. But we have, in the past, experienced some fluctuation in those rates. We know that this is something that we will be revisiting during the budget process to, now that we have received those July rates. On the health insurance, we have a similar issue with working with an estimated number. Our plan runs, renews in March, and that's the time when we find out what, what we're able to accomplish from a rate increase. So that has been built into the budget at a 20% increase over the amounts that we're currently paying for that new period. Right now, we have in the budget what we're currently paying because that's good until March. So those two items, you see spikes in them, and this explains the assumptions that we made during the budget process. And we'll be able to look at the retirement, but health insurance, we really won't know that until March. But we wanted to be conservative on, on that.
Ann, real quick, just on the health insurance, what would be the impact if we moved it to a October renewal instead of the March one? So we'd have a better vision because you get rates by July, August, at the very latest on renewal rates.
May I address that?
I know it'd be an initial increase, but would it help in the budgeting process down the road? That's my big question.
I'll kind of refer to Ann, but the, some of the battles that we've had over the years, we have looked at trying to move it to an October 1 and/or a January 1 for multiple purposes, deductible purposes, renewal purposes. Our challenges are the insurance companies aren't, won't quote us from March until the following October. So they would quote us March until that October, so we would pay six months and then we'd have another increase in six months. So that would be one challenge because we could get hit with a 20% increase twice in one year. And then the other part is circling around, if we did it the other way and went to a January, you have some challenges with runoff on claims. So we would be double paying, not technically double paying claims, but it kind of looks like on a, from a financial standpoint, that you could double pay some claims.
I have a question about health insurance. I think when you have referred to this before, you said that one of the reasons that we're having, seeing these increases is that we're having a negative experience in regard to usage, you know, which is people need it, they need it. I understand that. Is there any way that, well, we have, what, 70 employees or 60 something employees? Is there any way that we could group our employees with larger groups?
We have, since I've been here, we've researched that probably two or three times because we are a smaller group, we are a high-risk group because of that utilization category. We have, on average, anywhere from seven to 10, over $10,000 claims. And our claims unfortunately have ongoing prognosis, which obviously means there's no end to them in sight. So it's an ongoing expenditure. No groups want to take us. We've talked to the fire district, we've talked to Lee County.
There's no consortium of municipalities or any Florida, L.A. cities or anything like that?
We have looked into those. We looked into them two years ago and I'd have to pull some of my notes of the reasoning why, but financially, it was similar to the same thing because we are that higher, we really get stuck in a demographics challenge and a utilization challenge are our two big things, as well as our size. And if we could resolve that, we would. But the demographics is also, and so we, we are a risky group that could cause more increases due to that. It is an annual battle that we go through. We really want to try to balance the budget, obviously, as well as the benefits packages stay competitive, so that we don't have the budgetary concerns of turnover as well because it could all cause budgetary challenges.
Well, I think that unless somehow this health issue is resolved at a higher level, we're going to continually have that problem. So I would suggest that we look at that. It's not going to go away.
We work, we do have a benefits broker we work with every year to try to weigh every single option that we have. Not this, this, but our benefits year, but the benefits year prior, we went to a partially-funded plan in hopes that we would be getting some money back in unused premiums towards claims. We were reversed and we went 30% over what the premiums were that were paid into it. So when we went to renewals, they would not renew us because of that because obviously they're losing the money on it versus us gaining it. So we do try every single year to look at every single option we can. It's a challenge that we start in about December-ish, January and continue to look.
It is obviously a concern.
Yeah.
Because even in our efforts to try to keep the premiums down, we've got, obviously, we've got some health situations with some of our folks that we don't have any control over.
Right.
And every year, as Meg indicates, we do a great job of trying to go out and just see what we can do to control costs. And that means that we're probably on our third health insurance company since I've been here in six years, and it might even be more than that.
It's the three.
But, but the bottom line is, is if we're willing to switch companies every year if we have to, unfortunately, we have to drag the employees through that effort of enrollment and those kinds of things. We've been fortunate to date to, to hear some scary estimates of what our increases would be and being able to manage it through Meg, through our broker, that we do fairly well relative to the first number we hear. And those numbers are often scary.
This past year, for March of 2017 renewals, the original proposal was a 30% renewal and we negotiated it down to a 9% renewal. On average, since I've been doing it seven, eight years, it's been anywhere from 15 to 30 plus percent renewals that we start with. And we usually are able to negotiate it down to less than 10% or right over 10%. But that's with a lot of changes to the plan, and we have gotten to a plan where if we make any more significant changes to the plan, we're going to lose that competitive edge with our benefits. We, four, five years ago, we left the traditional plan, a co-pay plan, and went to a high deductible plan, which if you've ever experienced it, it could be a very positive experience, it could be a very challenging experience. And that was one of our biggest things, to try to save budgetary money in that sense. And we still have them coming in. I think the year before last, 36% was our first one that came in, and we negotiated it down by changing some deductibles and stuff.
Carl, is there ever a possibility that we run out of companies?
I was going to let you know that my, there's about four big companies that we look at. It's your Aetna, your United Healthcare, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Cigna. Several years ago, Blue Cross, Blue Shield stopped even going to market for us, and this past year, Aetna stopped. So we are technically down to Cigna and United Healthcare because, and the answer is our utilization.
Yep.
I mean, this past, our most recent report, and we can't always get reports because we are a small group, and if you're under 100, we can't always get reports due to HIPAA reasons. This past, our most recent report, we had eight claims ranging from $10,000 to $78,000. And they're all, and all but one is an ongoing prognosis. And they take 12 months to fall off of the effects of the renewal. So if one of those employees were to leave, it takes a full, almost a full two renewal periods for it to not affect our renewals anymore, even though that person is no longer an employee of ours.
That's getting scary.
Very scary.
Ann, what is the total amount of the insurance premium?
The?
Total amount of the insurance premium, for help?
For the?
Citywide.
The total? We're, we're expecting it to be this 658,103 for this year, and that includes?
Where, is that on one of these lines?
That's, yeah, that's on the, this.
Line item 23?
Line item 23. Thank you. Right there.
That has some life in it.
It has some life in it, yes.
And so we're requesting 800?
It's 846. Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Meg?
Yes.
On this thing of combining, trying to get to a bigger group, I heard what you said about, well, other groups don't want to take us because we would screw up their good rating or their better rating than us. Maybe what we should do is look for other groups that are similar like we are. And then even if, even if they have the same loss ratio as we do, if we can put two or three of those together, there is strength in a bigger premium that they would, as we looked at that possibility?
We have not because in the area, we kind of have to stick to the area of who we're going to, we would partner around in for coverage purposes. And in the area until Astero, we really, there really isn't anybody in the public sector that is as small as we are. And there, there's one other component to that challenge is, and I'll use the fire department for, as an example, we're a fully funded insurance plan, they're a self-funded insurance plan. So it's a little bit different dynamics of the plans too. It's not just, we can jump on board, pay them the money to take care of us. There's a little bit more to it than just putting us on their plans. But we, we can re-attempt it.
So they have a self-funded plan with an administrator, in fact?
No, actually, we've changed. We've changed. In the last two years, we are in an HSA, just like the city.
Oh, you are?
But it's still self-funded with the TBA?
Nope.
No?
We are, this year, we were, last year, it was with Blue Cross, fully funded.
City of Naples is self-funded with a TBA?
They are.
They're larger.
They are self-funded, TBA.
Well, they're larger because they combine fire and police within the city.
And that's going to be another component and challenge is if we get involved, attempt to get involved with somebody like a city of Naples that has six, seven unions involved in it, then we're tied to what, some of their unions and their union agreements and their union negotiations as well as the fire district here, which could be a good order.
And I'll just chime in here for half a second for what it's worth. I've always kind of had a different, some may call it warped, sense of health plan. And we pay all this money and we jump through all these hoops and we get enrolled, and then quite frankly, the coverage is horrible. You know, it doesn't work for whatever reason, you haven't met your deductible, you haven't done this, you haven't done that. So I just wonder about a health savings plan or something different, but I don't want to complicate things.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, we do have a health savings account for the employees here. So, because we were concerned about them being able to make some of these high deductible, especially if things go wrong in a family, but even the employees. So we do have an HSA active, and we've had that now for maybe four years, five years?
About six.
Okay. So we've got one of those.
What line item is that?
It's in that same line item. It's all income.
So it's... So can you split it out, so we knew which was premium versus a health savings account?
We can do that. Meg, what is the average deductible?
In the market?
For the employees?
Right now, our deductible for an employee is $2,600, and for a family, it's 5250. I'm almost positive without having it right in front of me.
Wow.
And we contribute $2,200 into that. For them, to try to help some of the stuff of what the mayor is saying is, we do have $12 an hour employees that can't technically afford, because on a high deductible plan, you pay everything before that deductible's reached. So you go to the doctor, you get a $150 bill. That was what we put in place to reduce, to assist in the employees that have the lower wages that can't afford to cover the deductibles that the mayor said. One of the changes we had to make this year is to get our numbers down from the 30 to the nine, is we had to remove out-of-network coverage altogether. So you go to a doctor that is not in our network, there is no coverage for that. And these are the types of components to the plans that we have to kind of remove and eliminate and reduce to keep in a budget, budgetary standpoint, but try to affect the employees in the least amount.
Do we have any, I asked this before, a few months ago, I used the wrong word, I said co-pay. On the premium side, do we have employee contributions to premiums?
For employee coverage?
Yeah, or city council, anybody's on that plan?
For single coverage for employees, it's covered 100% by the organization.
So there is no, no participation?
Correct. For the, any dependent coverage for the employees, the employees pay 100% of the dependent coverage. For council members, for dependent coverage, council members pay $70 a month for the coverage.
Independent coverage, okay. Naples, 15%, I believe?
I have, and this may be a little, I have from 2015, so let me see what it is then. It could cha, oh, I just have a total dollar amount, so I can find that information out.
Yeah. I did the same thing, I just took total dollars and employee contributions, I came to 15. And I had a chat with Bill Moss about it one day, he said, I think it's around 15.
Yeah. I can prob, actually probably get the answer fairly quickly for you.
But Meg, it would be useful if you had some concept of what the expenditures were for health services out of the 70 employees that we have. And you said that's not available?
Not for under 100. Because we're under 100, we can't, can get very minimal utilization reports on a fully funded plan because of HIPAA issues.
Because, I mean, you, the, the numbers you mentioned don't add up to $850,000, you know, but there's these smaller expenses and, you know, that, you know...
Those are only claims over $10,000.
$10,000, so we don't have the other ones.
I mean, you have day-to-day claims that...
Don't show up.
And, and, and some people don't understand what it takes to get to that. It seems like from a consumer that it doesn't take much to get to that $10,000 point. But like I said, those are large...
But if you've just back...
I gotta be careful with HIPAA, but those are large, ongoing prognosis.
Right, and I understand that, because nothing happens and it costs $10,000. That's my experience. But, but what I'm saying is that even if you focus on those over $10,000 and back it in, it says that your experience, let's say they take every bit of that $850,000 to pay out, it suggests that a focus might be better spent on trying to get everyday expenses under control. If you want it, because you could approach it from improving your experience rating, that's the one thing.
Which we will be this year implementing a wellness plan. Those large claims won't be affected by a wellness claim. But the items that you are talking about, the sinus infections, the minor things that are $100, $120, $150 here and there, those are, we are implementing a wellness program this year to try to work on some of those dollar amounts that you don't necessarily see, because they're not large claims, but can be reduced. The hypertension, the high blood pressure, high cholesterol, things like that.
Meg, I'm assuming you guys have a prescription plan also with this?
We do, but our prescrip, prescription plan is not touched until after your deductible.
Right, but I'm just saying, I, just from our experience at the fire department, I mean, you know, you've got those five or six, eight big claims, the prescription is just right there with it. We have a couple of people on our, at our department that have ongoing health problems that, you know, the prescriptions alone are $12,000 to $15,000.
A couple of ours.
Every six months.
Yeah.
And a few of ours are the same.
So I mean, that judges the claims also, is what I was trying to get at. It's not just...
And it goes to these, not just the major ones, but typically, you know, when you take a look at insurance premiums and how the companies look at it, because they used to serve on a 20-city consortium, clearly, it's your major hits, its severity, and then it's also frequency. And frequency is something we may have an opportunity to have influence on.
And with pharmacy, we do spend a lot of time, if you're familiar with educating during open enrollment, the staff on the outside pharmacy plans that don't go through our insurance, but they can use the health savings card for. So it's not hidden in our utilization with insurance, but they still have health.
Pre-anbotics at publics and all that.
Publics, target, CVS, the ones that you are all aware of, the discount programs, which are mainly generic, but we also work with them, myself and Charlie work with them, to review ones that may not be generic, but the manufacturers have discount programs as well. We're trying to help our utilization through the city, as well as the, what's hitting the employee's pocket. So we do try to spend a lot of time on trying to lower some, some of those items. And the HSA account, the high deductible plan, one of the reasons we switched to it is it makes the employees, it makes the participants think a little bit more about what they're doing and where they're going. I know chiropractic across the board is one of them. If you had a co-pay, you knew you were paying $20 to go to the co-pay, you got an adjustment and a massage for 20 bucks, you would go as frequently as you can. Well, now it's 120 bucks, you're not going to go as frequently and as often as you would have in the past.
What our experience has been is that employees, I mean, probably all of us, will spend more time researching the purchase of a new television than trying to figure out the best place to get healthcare.
Yeah. It's one of the problems with American healthcare.
Right, exactly.
Can you solve that one?
What, is that on the list? Okay.
Number seven.
Okay.
Anyone else for Meg? Thank you, Meg, thanks for all your work on this.
Thanks, Meg.
I wouldn't want your job.
Thanks.
Okay, Ann?
The next slide addresses the variances in the professional services and contractual services. The budget for FY 2018 is actually slightly higher than what we're looking at. We are expecting FY 2017 to be 300,000. We budgeted 50,000 in the city attorney's office, this is on slide seven. And so we're going to be exceeding that budget this year, but our budget for FY 18 is 100,000 for the, in the city attorney's legal fee, professional services. So that's causing that variance that you see, where we're a variance from expected. The budget, the 18 budget varies from expected by, it's less by 146,000 and higher than the FY 17 budget by 59,000.
And why is that? I mean, what, what is going, I thought we, we had had a special counsel and stuff like that, and so why, why is it lower, only 100,000? Is that all we need?
I'll let Audrey address that.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What are you going to be going through here? In other words, this is, I just want to understand the context.
Just talking on the large variances in the budget?
Certain variances?
Yes, yes.
All right.
And, actually, just one more slide.
Sorry, trying to bring this down for the record. I'm going to hold it, it'll probably be easier for the record, Audrey Vance.
This year, we have several anomalies, plus council had requested additional land use assistance, further refined, so there is an increase in the budget. Normally, for litigation, I try to, are we asking for next year or the current, right now, the current year?
No, my question was, we're, but we're going to spend 300,000 this year, and then for 2018, it's going to be 100,000. But it, doesn't that include the special counsel, or I mean...
All right, so until we have...
What happened this year that's not reflected in 2018?
Okay, I, I normally keep my budget low, and the reason is because sometimes where we have had high budgets, it turns, turns out that litigation did not emanate, and so costs were significantly lower than, and so you had money tied up in a budget area where you did not necessarily, it, it's unforeseeable. If we win motions to dismiss earlier and we're not stuck in appeals, a case that we might estimate 150,000 suddenly go down to 3,000.
So 2017, 2017 has a lot of litigation expense in it, is that what you're saying?
We are currently having some heavy litigation expenses now. We could increase the budget, and also, we have not yet implemented cost recovery. We're anticipating cost recovery for the specialized land use council for review of planning and zoning, because that's what council has directed. At this point, we still don't have a contract because they're ferreting out what they estimate the cost to be outside council. So I'm trying to have a budget that's not necessarily tying up a lot of city money that might not be necessary. And I typically don't like to keep money tied up unless you feel that it is absolutely necessary. Now, I will tell you, we had some expenses, for example, we had a very large motion to It probably cost, just on that portion of discovery, it cost over $60,000 in providing the documents, of getting the documents prepared and reviewing the documents prior to sending them out to outside council, or not to outside council, to opposing council.
Okay, thank you.
The next area, contractual services, some increases that we have in the FY 2018 budget that are somewhat new to the budget. 2018 elections, that's of course because of election year, $168,000. And old 41 landscape coming online for maintenance, 52,000. And adding to the city manager's budget, consulting services of 30,000 for the last, the current year budget, we did not have anything budgeted there. And then our law enforcement contract anticipating a $90,000 increase over what we expect this year's cost to be. Other current charges that had a bit of a spike, and that is because we have added a $200,000 contingency account in the general fund that was not there for this current fiscal year, and that will help us with some of the issues that Audrey mentioned, that in the event that there are additional professional services fees, that that potentially could be a source of funding, and then other needs for the city.
I'm a little confused about contingencies, because we have a bunch of miscellaneous things that affect contingencies. We, we can budget the entire reserve, and as appropriate, that can come back to council.
Yes.
And that would work the same way.
Yeah.
So it's not as though, this is made as a statement, it's a question, it's not as though we need contingencies to be able to access money.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Next slide addresses the variances in our capital outlay, and this is a list of what has been requested in the FY 2018 budget for machinery and equipment, and identifies from a standpoint of the vehicles, the date they were acquired, and the mileage, and then other items, replacement air conditioning unit for the fitness room, and then some items for the school, for the pool area, and security camera at Lyles Hotel. And the next slide was just a slide I provided, because I know there's a lot of interest in this. This is using the 2006 mileage rates, but this is using our preliminary taxable values within the city and shows the amount of taxes that are levied on the city properties, and the difference between the 2006 final taxable value and the preliminary value that we received July 1.
So this says that Beneath Springs City taxpayers paid property ta, will pay property taxes of approximately $46 million to Lee County?
That's correct.
That's correct.
At the 2016 mileage rate.
Right.
Okay. And, and that's all I have from the standpoint of the general fund. I know that the, the large dollars within the budget are in the capital improvement plan, so that's all I have for this.
Just generally, the law enforcement went up 90,000, is expected of, what, what is it being expected to?
It's, it's a 6% increase, and this was an estimate, and they, they give us a, the final number once their budget is approved, but when they do their budget process, they at least give us an estimate. And that's what's driving that. Additionally, in the, the total for law enforcement, we provide, we, we get security to close up our parks at night, and that's a $27,000 cost included in addition to the Lee County contract.
Just to follow up, typically, do they go below the 6% when they give us an estimate, or have they gone above it historically?
It's been slightly lower when they actually overcame, but they're usually pretty close.
It's more like a cap?
Well, I think, what it is, it's, it's based upon the sheriff's request to the Board of Commissioners. And if they approve 6%, then we've got it in the budget. If they approve 5%, then there's some savings there that we can recognize.
But it's not typical that they would up it?
No, no.
No, okay, so that, that's a cap.
It is a cap, you're right, recovered.
All right.
There would be increases in salary and all that kind of stuff?
No, I understand, I just was understanding how it would affect the budget. My second question is, do we have any history on that, on what those raises have been over five years or so?
So during the recession, there were little if any increases at all, just because members of government typically weren't getting increases during that time, both at the county and in the municipalities. As the economy improved, those increases started up. Sometimes they were 3%, sometimes they were 4%. This year, it's 6%. I will tell you, in talking to some of the command staff at the sheriff's office, they are having major difficulties in keeping deputies at the salaries that they are paying right now, because especially younger deputies that are not tied into the retirement system yet, as someone who's more tenured, they're more mobile. And so they'll go work for municipalities or other counties that are paying higher wages. And so Sheriff Scott is attempting to correct that situation, help retention, and as well as help attraction of new talent.
And that's the, another example would be the state police, they're going to the county because their salaries are so low.
Correct. I think we've seen that on the news recently.
But, but it's an item that'll probably grow in the future, is that's where I'm going to.
Yes, it will.
As a department that...
Yes.
Carl, I might be, I might be wrong about this, but I thought a few years ago, our costs dropped from year to year.
It did.
Okay, what was that?
Well, see, what it was, is that in our contract, and I think this was just an oversight at the time, but in our contract, it had to do with capital costs.
Right.
So it was basically vehicles. So, you know, we probably pay in the vicinity of $85,000 a deputy, okay, average, which provides a body, uniforms, utility belts, as I call them, okay? All that equipment.
Right.
Did not include vehicles. So there'd be years when they needed to buy more vehicles.
Also spikes.
So it would spike up and then back down.
Okay.
And actually, what I tried to do to normalize that, so we had something a little bit more predictable, is we actually negotiated to change the contract to include the vehicles along with the bodies and the utility belts.
So you're building up.
So you're building up, so when they need to buy cars, they go out and get them.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
So we are at, where are we up to, the Wonder Gardens?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
All right. Peter, if you're there, I'd make a suggestion that we do the Wonder Gardens, and then, unless there's something specific, have a general council discussion of the budget after that?
Council's pleasure, absolutely.
All right. Maybe take a quick break after the Wonder Gardens, so, want to do that? Is that all right, council?
Sure.
Oh, good, okay. Wonder Gardens.
Okay, Wonder Gardens. As you're aware, we have a $3 million outstanding loan out of the general fund to the Wonder Gardens, and at this point, the June 1st payment has not been made. We also have $3 million in the road impact...
not been made. We also have $3 million in the road impact fee fund that is a loan receivable from the general fund. So, we have two separate transactions, but if the loan from the Wonder Gardens is not repaid, and there is an acquisition of property by the city, then that would become an expenditure, but we have within fund balance in the general fund, non-spendable amount of $3 million to offset that. So, in other words, if the city takes ownership, were to take ownership of the land, and it would be city property then, the accounting for it is to reflect that as a land acquisition expenditure.
So, in the budget at a glance, in those reserve numbers, is that baked in?
That, the $3 million is not in that, in this number at all, because it's considered non-spendable, so-
Well, I mean, when I say baked in, I mean, is the event, which obviously is gonna happen, right, that the city's gonna take it over, is that reflected here? In other words, are these balances for these funds assume that happens, or not? Just wanted to try to find the effect there.
It doesn't assume that happens because of two issues, the timing of when it would happen.
Right.
Whether it be before October 1 or after October 1.
Okay.
If the timing is that it would be after October 1, then that beginning fund balance would be bumped up by the $3 million, because we have that set aside to cover that loan. So, there's $3 million in our fund balance that we label as non-spendable, because we have an outstanding loan.
So, let me ask you a different way. Let's assume this had happened three days ago.
Mm-hmm.
All right. What would be, so, where would, is this where we would be on page?
This is where we would be.
This is where we'd be on 19?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Because this beginning fund balance is what is considered spendable.
Okay.
With $3 million, it's non-spendable, it's because it's offsetting that loan receivable that we don't have the money for to spend.
All right. So, where's the $3 million now on this page? Nowhere, or it's in a footnote?
It's not on the page. It is noted regarding the-
Well, there it is, footnote.
Loan, the road impact fees, because that also impacts that fund, because the $3 million came out of that fund.
Okay.
So, until the general fund pays back that loan, it doesn't have that money to spend either.
All right, so your footnote A reflects what you just talked about.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Just a, I know we've gone through this 100 times, so I just wanted to make sure. So, should we take follow-through on Everglade Wonder Gardens? This number becomes 7,909, right, on the top of the budget at a glance, no?
If it occurs in this fiscal year, it doesn't change.
We have $3 million, which is non-spendable, that's set aside or allocated to the general fund, all right?
Right.
All right, so then what happens?
If we take ownership of the land, we will record, it'll be, we'll need to have a budget amendment-
Right.
-to record an expenditure for land acquisition of $3 million.
So, so-
That offsets that fund balance.
That number will still be 4,909.
That, yes, that's what offsets.
And then what happens, in addition to that, we have a loan to the road impact fund-
Right.
On an obligation for $3 million there.
Right.
So, we have to reduce this by another $3 million?
No, because that's a balance sheet item only. That's a, that's a payment of cash between two funds. It doesn't affect our expenditures.
When we pay off that obligation to the gas fund, then we will reduce the general fund by $3 million, and the gas fund will go up 3, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect the fund balance.
Why not?
Because it's a cash, it's a balance sheet, it's paying off, it's repaying a loan on the balance sheet, so it's reducing our cash. And at this point, the general fund has not had any cash reduction, because the money came from the road impact fee fund. So, that's the cash reduction that will affect the general fund when we acquire the land, and we repay the road impact fee fund.
If I made the, so the road impact fee of 3.7 million, that's including the money, or it would go in there, so it would be 6.7 when we put it back in?
Right.
But the general fund, that's at 4.9, that would stay the same?
Correct.
So, right now, the $3 million's not even like on this page, except for the footnote.
Right, because it's not available. It's not, it's not spendable.
And also, that repayment of the load, the road impact, that doesn't have to be done in one year, that's spaced out over several years, right?
About two years.
And then, lastly, why are we not, right now, transferring that title back to us and doing this transaction? It does not have to wait until we come up with some agreement in October or whenever. Well-
I think we just voted on that to give it 90 days.
Oh, yeah, we did.
We don't have to worry about this today.
But why are we, why are we waiting 90 days to do it? That's my question.
So, trying to get the whole package together.
I don't think A goes with B.
All right.
That's my-
Can I ask you a favor? Will we hold on that for a second, and just stick on the budget amounts for a second?
Yeah.
So, just, I'm a little confused now.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, at some point, the road impact fee fund has to be paid back-
That's correct.
-$3 million.
That's-
All right. So, right now, the, and this left-hand column is a balance sheet concept. All right, so, so the balance in the road impact fee today is 3,700.
Fund balance.
All right. Fund balance.
Available fund balance.
Right, right, right. So, when that $3 million is paid from the general fund to the road impact fee fund, that will go up?
Correct.
Okay. When the general fund pays that, what will happen to the balance in the general fund?
It doesn't affect the fund balance, because it's just in the balance sheet.
It's, okay, can I take a run at this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I think I gotta run at it too.
Okay.
If it doesn't explain-
So, look, when it comes, when it comes to what's in front of you for the general fund-
Right.
We know that $3 million is sitting out there, and we know we owe it to the road impact fee fund.
Right.
All right. So, regardless of how the land gets accounted for, I mean, that's gonna happen if we take that over, just imagine, this page right here, number 19-
It's a payable in that fund.
I'm sorry?
It's a payable in that fund, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but here's the thing, so, for everybody else, this page on the general fund, this is what the money you have to deal with, right here, because that $3 million is sitting over here, okay?
Right.
So, it's sitting over here, so it's not accounted for on page 19, except that when that, when you pick up that $3 million, and you need to move it from general fund and pay the road impact fee fund, then nothing happens to the fund balance in general fund, because it's sitting over here, because you can't use it, right? And then, when you pay your impact fee fund, this will go up by $3 million.
So, that's why you keep talking about cash.
Right.
Interesting.
Why wouldn't we show it in the total all funds? Because, I mean, I understand moving it from one to the other doesn't affect the end number at the bottom, but why wouldn't we show it in one or the other until we move it?
Well, because it's not, right now, it's not spendable in either fund, because it's tied up.
It's basically in limbo right now.
So, really, the 18.39 at the bottom is really gonna be 21?
21, mhm, yeah.
But somewhere, we need to come up with $3 million cash out of the general fund.
Well, no, it's already accounted in there, because that's gonna stay at 4.9.
I know, I'm just, there's gotta be $3 million cash lying around.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there is.
Okay.
It's a lockbox in Paul's drawer.
Right.
Let's go look at it.
It's a gold-
Go look at it. Any other questions on the Wonder Gardens? Thank you, Ann.
And in the five-year projection, it does show that we do need to pay that back according to the needs of the road impact fee fund, no later than FY 2021, but I would recommend prior to that.
And it sounded like there was a little confusion about how many years we have, so to straighten that out, the original deal was for three years.
Correct.
Or it did be paid back in three years. So, we have a year left there, all right, but that deal's kinda getting blown up in favor of some other deal that's yet to be figured out. So, then you take a look at, when do you have to pay, repay the road impact fee fund to legally be within state requirements and have the money available in time to do some projects? And you can do that at any pace you want, but right now, we've only got about seven or eight years left?
Seven.
Seven years left to actually make that repayment, so that that money's available to be used.
Because road impact fees have to be used within 10 years.
Correct.
Right.
We've already run-
As they're allocated.
Two or three years now.
As they're allocated.
Yeah.
And Fred, to get back to your question, I think the best answer is that if the city simply, so obviously, the city, we've worked, the city's gonna take it over, okay, but if the city took it over today without an agreement with the Wonder Gardens as to how that's gonna be operated, legally, we'd just be owning that piece of property without an agreement. So, that's why the whole package has to be done together.
Right.
That's the short answer to it.
We'd have to run it.
Well, we'd have to figure out what to do, and figuring out what to do is entering into whatever we're entering into then. So, that's why.
It's part and part.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not as optimistic that we'll have it figured out in nine days, so we could have a short-term agreement to cover that gap.
In effect, we do now by pushing off the maturity date. In other words, what we, right, by pushing it off, we're continuing in place under what we have now, which is a whole set of arrangements that work.
And the only thing there, and Carl likes to laugh, that I switch back and forth between council member and being on the board of the Wonder Gardens. Right now, the Wonder Gardens is still collecting money on rental units, so that's going to them. In essence, we're not charging them anything, so-
Right.
There's, you know, if we took ownership, that money would become to us, so we're kinda leaving money on the table.
Well, it could be worked out when we open the doors on a new agreement.
Yeah, but the longer you wait, you're leaving money on the table, so, that's, I think it's a point.
But if you wanted to, you could make that part of a gross-up at the time you start the new agreement, if you wanted to.
Well, that, in the same token, I mean, I'm sure they're not stashing it in Carl's office either. They're using it for capital improvements, paying staff and all that, so I don't think they're making money on the deal by rental, to be honest.
Yeah, because my office can only take so much money.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is, you know, with the switch over, that would be money that would come into our general funds.
Well, Michael, there are all kinds of financial aspects to it that we need to work out, because, you know, we're not talking about getting any interest, which we had, what we were getting. We're forgiving a lot of stuff financially, so that's just one microcosm there. So, that's why we need a total package here, to understand what we're giving up and what we think we want, or what we wanna facilitate that. It's not, it's not an easy contract.
No, and obviously, it's not something that we should be doing today.
Exactly.
But to Fred's point, we don't wanna keep putting it off, so, and that's all I was meant by it.
Well, you're in charge of that.
Right.
Why don't you get moving on that?
All right, I think, are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Anything else on the Wonder Gardens?
Nothing.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break? Is that all right?
You may wanna turn your microphones off during those periods.